Good afternoon. We'll go ahead and call the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners Special Meeting on May 19, 2025 at 4:00 p.m. to order. I'd like to welcome everybody that's here and those listening online. We appreciate everyone here for this special meeting about our homeless capacity and emergency shelter. At this time, we'll go ahead and have the Invocation Pledge of Allegiance. I'll call in Vice Chairwoman Veronica Jones to bring us the Invocation Pledge. It's great to have her back.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we just want to thank you. We thank you for allowing us to gather today. We ask that everything be done in decency and order. We ask that we make decisions that will help impact our community for the greater good, for we know that this meeting is important for the services and decisions that it will be made for our community. Lord, we just thank you again for the opportunity to serve and to be united. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead and move to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Chairman Davier.
Hearing none. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Vice Chairwoman Jones?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Seconded. A motion and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
We'll go ahead and move to item three, Emergency Shelter Discussion. And County Manager Greer, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, I'm going to turn this over to Heather Gaines, Assistant County Manager. She's going to provide an overview of the emergency shelter discussion that we've had recently, both with the few of our commissioners and with one of our local partners, Salvation Army.
Hi. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Cumberland County was notified on April 15, 2025, that the Salvation Army was closing their shelter effective immediately. This was a loss of approximately 60 to 65 beds. Based off this notification, our Continuum of Care, or COC, held an emergency meeting with members to discuss the impact and brainstorm options on April 17, 2025. Major and Captain Goldfarb were present at that meeting and indicated that it would take approximately $1 million to reopen the shelter. I met with the Goldfarbs on April 24, 2025, to discuss the plan for the shelter, which included reviewing their audit, their financial records, cost to reopen, and sustainability plan. During the meeting, the Goldfarbs were open and willing to provide the documents the county requested and provided their external and internal audit, financial records through March 2025, and their cost plan to reopen. They did not have a sustainability plan at that time. Our discussion included the following: The past due account to Dreamville Temp Agency of 80,000 to 100,000, with their notification on 4/14 of furloughing all temp staff at the shelter and thrift store. Salvation Army did pay 13,000 on April 11 and thought they had some time based off of that payment. They discharged four families with children and 26 singles when they closed their shelter. Our discussion also included the inability to hire permanent staff for over a year, and therefore they were using the temp agents as to run their shelter and their thrift store. Headquarters informed them that they are no longer permitted to use temp agency for staffing, and they did not receive any income from headquarters to assist with this issue. The shelter program falls under their core budget, and they indicated to me that it was difficult to separate out their community meals from their shelter meals at that time. We also discussed at that meeting why they did not apply for community-based funding with the county or for community impact funding. They made a request for funding and that they must have upfront funding and not a reimbursement because they had limited cash flow. I informed them I needed a request in writing and that it should not be a sole request from the county to fund their program. At that meeting, the ask was for $562,804.73, which included outstanding staff invoices, building maintenance, and upkeep, staffing, and meals. I received a letter of request on April 25, 2025, stating their monthly expenses are $46,888.39, with a request to the county of $562,660.72. They were requesting $352.660.72 from the county and $200,000 from the city. The letter did not include a sustainability plan. This letter also included the incomplete community-based funding application without the required metrics with a request of $1 million. I spoke with the Office of Community and Economic Development Office with the city, the director there, and he was not recommending funding to Salvation Army due to their financial records and concerns. I later emailed the Goldfarbs on May 9 and inquired about their most current internal audits, which are not complete yet, any metrics, and when they could be operational, and cost per person per day. They responded with their number of 65 in their census capacity based on the fire marshal. They could be operational on May 16, and their daily per-person rate is $31.25. I was copied on and now dated May 14 to Chairman Davier. In the email, they reported that after discussion with Divisional Headquarters, they could only reconsider opening with a funding commitment of one year, with a cost of $46,888.39 a month for 50 residents. Each additional resident up to 62 would be an additional cost of $31.25 per day. An MOU would need to be established prior to opening, and they reported they could open after it was fully executed. Additionally, they reported that they could not lease the building. Due to the internal audit, financial disclosures, inability to hire permanent staff for the past year, outstanding invoices to the temp agency, and no commitment from the city, and no sustainability plan, I presented an alternative short-term solution to the Finance Committee while we continue to assess immediate and long-term solutions. So that plan I brought to the Finance Committee is a short-term solution to the loss of these beds and provided us time to evaluate immediate solutions. Due to the complexities of our unhoused community ensuring that they are addressing the safety needs, I recommended two sheltering options. One of our most valid white flag partners for the last years has had agreed to assist us at the time. When I had my initial discussion with them, they were agreeing to 50 beds capacity Monday through Friday at a flat rate of 100 per person. This would be used as a men's shelter with no children. They initially agreed to two months, however, later said they could do up to three months. We'd reached out to several hotels and had preliminary confirmation of room availabilities. These rooms would be used for families and single women. The cost is dependent on the hotel, and we would reserve a block of rooms to guarantee availability. This plan would address the immediate need for 60 shelter beds and potentially provide additional beds depending on the number of hotels used and available funding. We also created a shelter page for coordinated entry, or otherwise known as CE, which would allow us to continue to monitor the number of people requesting shelter. And as of this morning, the reports were 14 single men, nine single women, one family without children, 15 families with children, for a total of 39 households since April 15. I also asked them to go back and look at requests for previous month of any individuals that were referred to Salvation Army and had not been picked up or addressed by Salvation Army. Those numbers were 13 single men, two single women, two families with children, five families, two families without children, and five families with children, for a total of 22 households. So since March, that total is 61 households that have identified shelter needs. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. We'll go ahead and open it up first. Thank you, Assistant County Manager Gaines, for your work on this, and we appreciate what you've already brought to the Commissioners and then today you and staff as well. I'll open it up to Commissioners. We also, we do have the Salvation Army. We invited the Salvation Army here, and we will hear from him following questions for the Assistant County Manager or others, staff, if we have questions. And then we'll open it up to the Salvation Army to add anything that he'd like to add for additional conversation. So I will open it up to Commissioners now. Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you. Ms. Gaines, historically, how much has the county funded Salvation Army, let's say, the last two budget cycles?
So in the last two budget cycles, they have not received any community-based funding from the county.
Have they applied for that? If I may have a follow-up?
I don't manage the community-based funding, so I do not know if they...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. County Manager?
No. No, they didn't apply for any community-based funding.
Other Commissioners, additional questions? Vice Chairwoman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question, Ms. Gaines. Heather, in regards if we were to decide, I know we have a lot of decisions and options here. I'm just going to put it out there. When would the Health Department be doing, expecting inspection? I know there were some concerns about the building, primary, the building that's there, the Salvation Army building. Is there any updated status for when the next inspection of the building itself to see if it can be utilized? Or what's the plan with that?
So currently, environmental health with our Health Department does not inspect this building. They're not required to. If that direction was provided to us, if that guidance was, then I would speak with our Environmental Health Director. We would try to get out in the next week or two.
Thank you.
Follow-up?
I guess that would be my concern for follow-up. There has been some concerns, and of course, safety. We want to definitely make sure housing is of safety. So I would like to see, I guess, about exploring when an inspection could be done. I know for me, if we did decide to go that route, I would want some steps initiative in advance to be in inspection and see what the Health Department would say about the particular building. If we could maybe consider getting some steps to have that done, please?
We will do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other Commissioners? All right. At this time, I'd like to invite Major Goldfarb to add any information that you'd like to add to your current proposal that you sent into myself and staff on May 14. So I will turn it over to you, Major, if you want to go ahead.
Okay. I can tell you that we have hired several people, not for the shelter, obviously, because we're not open, but we've hired 12 people in the last two weeks for our store. So it is possible to hire people who can actually pass background checks, and we've done that, and we're training them now to reopen our store, which is part of our sustainability plan. And so we have reinforcements from our headquarters to help train that. We do have a reopening date for that particular store, which is going to be, it's a grand reopening on Saturday, June 14, at the Robeson Street location, and that is part of our sustainability plan. A lot of people don't realize what the store is and what it's there for. If it's functioning properly, the word "properly" is the key word there, it allows the community to do several things, obviously donate things, household goods, clothing. It gives us an opportunity to give clothing vouchers to those that need it. And third, and maybe most importantly, is when the expenses, when the income exceeds the expenses, to appropriate money back to the Salvation Army to use for programs like shelter, the youth center, which we will be opening in a few weeks as well. So we're making some progress with that. We probably have to go through, you know, twice as many applicants to get some of the past background checks, but we are making headway, and we think we have a, we know we can staff our shelter or whatever program we have. We're also hiring right now for our youth center, which will be open the first week of June, and for about approximately 25 school-age kids, age 6 to 12. And so we're doing well there.
Major Goldfarb, is there anything you'd like to expand or further explain the proposal that you're presenting to the county for reopening of the shelter, not your store, but the shelter itself?
So the shelter, we've, I don't even know how long we've operated the shelter, maybe 25 years. I don't know the exact date. I do know that we are the only shelter in Cumberland County for families and women. The battered women's shelter does not take homeless women, even if they're battered. That's not, that's not an option. And so our, for years, the Salvation Army, when we were doing well, we were funding the shelter, we were paying our bills with no problem. We had a tough Christmas, and we knew in January that this, that something had to change, and we appealed to our advisory board, our closest partners, and we still were not able to pull out of the hole that we got ourselves into. And so they are, we do have a strategic plan, and it's not a very good one. We are working on a strategic plan that's going to be update, updated, and so I think with our store reopening, I think we're going to be positioning ourselves to be fiscally in a good place. Unfortunately, we can't operate a shelter with no partners. I mean, we get money in, and we have historically from the community, and when those, those resources are not exhaustive, when we run out of money, we have to either choose to find money from other sources or reduce services, and that's where we find ourselves in. And this is not unique to Fayetteville, and so we, we need, we can't sustain the shelter without the county's help. Originally, yes, I did ask the city for $200,000. I was informed, our board member, Dino Hondros, was telling me this is a county function, not a city function. So that's why I made the request for proposal to the county, and maybe, maybe he's wrong. Maybe he's just wanting to deflect and put kind of the, you know, I don't know. But all I know is, right now, we're not in a position to be able to operate the shelter like we need to.
So, Major Goldfarb, walk us through, so we understand, the cost per month is roughly $46,900 a month. That covers 50 beds, any beds up Any beds above that would be at a rate of 31.25 per day, up to 62. Can you add any, any information around that? What does that cost include? Kind of what's the breakout of that cost? And then a quick question around timeline, but I'll go ahead and let you answer the cost question first, so we fully understand it.
Okay, the cost section, and I have sent this to Heather, this was, the Salvation Army, our software program, as we mentioned in the request for proposal, does not separate the shelter out specifically, although in the attachments that I did send to Heather, one of the attachments had an expense sheet. So when, when our bookkeeper is expensing for the shelter, there is a three-digit code. So we know how much is funded or expensed through the shelter and how much for the kitchen. As she explained, because the kitchen is another three-digit code, we don't have another three-digit code to separate community meals. It's impossible. So we kind of just lumped that all together as that's the only way I'm able to do that. And so I basically lumped all those, what we were paying, and that was for, I believe it was for five months, because, and that's how I came up with these numbers here. That, that number, 31.25, is the total number, the total expense that I requested divided by 50 people, divided by 30, and came up with the $31.25 per person. And so that, that particular, for that, for that funding, if we were to open, as we mentioned in the request for proposal, it would cover comprehensive services, including shelter accommodations, of course, daily breakfast and dinner, access to laundry facilities. By the way, we just purchased, three or four months ago, seven new washers and seven dryers, so that the people, the folks don't even come over to the day resource center to do their laundry. They do it at the Salvation Army shelter. And then, most importantly, case management service, where we, we give people access to resources that will help them get an address. That's the, and so all the things that go along with the shelter is what it would include.
Okay, that includes security as well, correct?
It doesn't include manned security. We do have, we do pay for video services. We do not have a person there overnight who is security.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause on the dollars and cents and open it up to commissioners, if they have any questions related to the explanation around the monthly cost of this. Commissioners, I'll entertain any input or any questions. Does anybody have any at this time? Commissioner, Vice Chairman Jones?
Thank you, Chairman Divya here. Thank you for your time. I do have a few questions. I know that you stated when it comes to services, accommodations, as far as breakfast and lunch, as well as washer and dryer, case management. With that being said, how many people are actually employed, providing these services? And your services are, and for those that are listening as well, that may or may not be familiar, can you give us, number one, when you all were up and running, the hours that you all operate, number one, and the days that you all operate, for those that might not be as familiar? And then I have a few other questions.
So for those who don't know about the Salvation Army services, the Salvation Army service is a 24-hour facility, 365 days a year. We don't close. Now, having said that, the times that the residents come in are from 3 o'clock in the afternoon and right now, we currently have them leaving at 9:00 a.m. for the day. Having said that, during that 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. was also their time, they would have an appointment to come back and see the caseworker, to go over things, make sure they were following their plan. And so the residents were not allowed into the building other than an appointment from 9:00 to 3:00, unless we had two or three of them and we made accommodations for them, because we have, we have several people that were working overnight and we really wanted them to succeed. And so we allowed them to sleep in our building during the daytime. They weren't hurting anything. As far as the employees, any given time, three to four employees there during the daytime, always a monitor there 24/7 to make sure everything is, is safe. We do have cameras, we do have a monitor on staff, but they're not security like we would think of, of armed security, but they do monitor and make sure everybody's safe.
Okay, you can have a follow-up. And for my follow-up, Ms. Skeens, Heather said earlier, so is that about accurate estimate, 26 singles, four families? Is that correct, as far as the services you all providing? You have 50 beds and she was stating 26 singles and four families were perceiving, getting services at your facility? Is that not right?
So, not quite. So we have, we have several families that are in our facility. The day that we closed, yes. So we don't always run at capacity. And what I explained to Heather was the reason why we're not always at our 62 capacity is we have bunk beds and some of the folks that we interview simply cannot get up on a bunk. And so sometimes we run lower, sometimes we run more. Sometimes the folks stay in our building for 42 days. Sometimes they get a permanent address within 30 days. So it just depends. A person that is working and making steps in their plan to, to become self-sufficient, we will extend that and extend it until they get an address. That's, that's our total goal for our program.
I understand. So basically, that's just a give or take average, but it can fluctuate, correct?
Correct. So most of the time, we do run pretty close to full. At the time that we closed abruptly, which is not something that we would ever want to do, we, we had less, so we probably were running 35, 40. So we had eight fam, eight family people and 30, so we were only at 38, but normally we are pretty full. But again, people are finding addresses and it just fluctuates.
And then just kind of one more follow-up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And then one more follow-up. I know you stated there's like three to four employees that would come in, you're 24 hours. So do you all do this in shifts, just for people to get a better understanding? So do you have employees coming in from, say, 7:00 to, do they work like eight hours in the next shift of three to four? Can you just elaborate just a little bit, so people can see how the operation of your particular services are provided, please?
All right, so we have a monitor comes in at midnight, 12 to 9:00. They're there from 12 to 9:00. Somewhere around 7:30, well, actually, 7:00 o'clock, our cook comes in, starts to prepare breakfast. Our social worker and shelter manager comes in around 8:00, 9:00 o'clock, somewhere around there, and they work until 5:00 in the afternoon. And then at 9:00 o'clock in the morning, another filter, monitor comes in from 9:00 to 6:00, or somewhere around there, and then from 6:00 to midnight. So it's a constant coverage. It's really one of the things that makes our program so expensive. A 24-hour program, it's really wrapped up in salaries, is the truth.
And thank you, because I wanted to clarify that. So you do have a licensed social worker that's there to provide services and a manager, and that's what I was trying to get at. So you do have a social worker that is there to provide services?
Yes, we do. And our, also, our shelter manager is also trained with HMIS, which is required by the continuum of care and the coordinated entry. And so we find that to be very helpful.
And with his staff, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last, I don't want to hog up all the questions. And so in the event, if we decide to take this particular option, is your staff members, since you have closed, are they prepared, the same staff members, or would you be hiring new staff? How would that work? Like, what would be the date available if we decided this route? And are those same employees ready and prepared to go back to work, is the question?
So two of the employees are now over at our store. Yes, they would come back to the shelter. The other, actually, we still have the cook in place that's still cooking for the shelter community meals. The other employees would not be temps, so no, they would not be the same employees. We would be training them. And to answer your question, after we got a proposal from the county, or the county and the city, or the county and whoever, we would, we would have to process that and it would, it would, it would take about two to three weeks in order to get, to get that memorandum of understanding and the, whatever we received as far as the agreement from the county, to get processed through our headquarters in Atlanta, Georgia. And then from that point, it would be all full steam ahead to get that open. That would be priority.
Other commissioners, questions? Commissioner Patel?
Major Gofarb, thank you so much for meeting with us today. And I appreciate our conversations earlier. And I know when we spoke, we had discussed timelines from state approvals, national headquarters approvals, and needing funding. So right now, you know, we have looked at maybe potentially starting up from an operational standpoint today. Given that certain things have fallen into place, what would be the timeline and what are some of the objectives that you need to accomplish to be able to open back up as we stand today?
So we would have to have a commitment of funding from the county to reopen. I wish I had, you know, unrestricted reserves, that I could just wave a magic wand and get this thing reopened. I don't. We have exhausted those unrestricted reserves. We do have some other reserves that we're pulling from, for example, Q endowments. I just pulled about $70,000 from interest from Q endowments, which you can't touch the principal, but we're using that to, you know, pay some of the bills that we had. But as far as what the, what our headquarters is looking for, is a commitment to fund the shelter for 12 months. We talked about, you know, was there a shorter time that we could do this? And they just, they feel like that, you know, a 90-day opening commitment would not be good for the community and it would not be good for the Salvation Army to venture in that area. And I will agree that we need a long-term solution. We are, so we're looking for the county for help. This is not unique to Fayetteville, by the way. This situation, funding partners have dried up in a lot of cities and a lot of shelters have closed. And so we're just looking for some help.
Commissioner Patel, anything else? Follow-up?
Just one follow-up, Major Gofarb. So it sounds like the first step you would need is funding, ideally from the county. So if that was to happen, move forward, what else would you need to, from a state standpoint and your national headquarters standpoint, in order for us to look at an actual timeline?
So as we mentioned in our request for proposal, the process takes between two to three weeks. Basically, what we, what we want to do is, is get an agreement from the county. You can say, we're gonna do this for this amount of money. We expect this, this, this from the Salvation Army and we certainly want to have the best program. We certainly want oversight from you guys, our advisory board, and, you know, we want to, want to do, for the county, do good for the, the individuals that we'll work through. And so two to three weeks, we could have a memorandum of understanding and be ready to, to run.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Tyson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So one of the privileges that I get to sit beside a great chief of staff is that he can get me answers to some of the questions I asked earlier. So it was, it was interesting to find out, the last time that the county funded the Salvation Army was fiscal year 2023, and the amount that we funded was $29,750. So I first want to just thank you and your team for picking up the banner and for carrying it for as long as y'all have. I know y'all have been in this community for a long time, doing this work. My question to you is this, you sent the RFP that was dated April 25, 2025, and you talk about a 12-month funding cycle. Is it, is it correct to assume that if this board were to look at that option, is the request still the 352-660-72 from the county? Or are you asking for the, for the county to fund the entire 562-660-72 and not ask the city for the $200,000?
You're muted, sir.
All right. I did send the request with that updated. This was after I met with our board member, Dino Hondros, who's also on the city council, that said typically the city doesn't get involved in that. I had no idea. And, and so I'm putting now the burden on the county in the new RMP that I did send.
Anything else, Commissioner Tyson? Any other commissioners, if I go around two? County manager, you have something to add?
One point of clarification to Commissioner Tyson's question. In fiscal year 2024, they asked for community funding, $59,000. In fiscal year 2025, they asked for funding, community funding, $50,000. Neither one was approved, so they didn't get any funding for community funding.
Vice Chairman Jones, round two?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, I do want to kind of address some of the elephants in the room, because I, as you all know, I do do the advocacy thing here. And I'm gonna go back to the condition of the building. Of course, people write and complain, they appreciate having shelter, but I would like to ask you, you may or may not be aware, but I'm sure your board members are aware of the condition of the building, your advisory board. So I would like to know, in the event if we choose to make, you know, accept this proposal or choose to help with this proposal, would that be then, would you all be requesting responsibility of us? As you heard, I stated to our staff member, Heather, earlier, because personally, I would definitely be wanting an inspection. And have you all had inspections done, outside inspection? Because there has been some concerns, just being honest, from people that have stayed there, who've reached out to me about concerns about the building itself. So can you elaborate on what you might know, or if your advisory board, what situations have been done, or have you all considered the condition of the building? Because of course, no doubt, we appreciate the work that you all do, but we also need to make sure, especially those who are disenfranchised, that are staying in these buildings, or staying in safe building, because we certainly don't want anyone to, you know, be distressed more than what they already are and have health issues. With that being said, have you all had any inspections from someone else, or when was the last time? And can you elaborate on the concerns of the building itself needing to be up to par? If you could just, you know, we just want to keep everything transparent.
Okay, certainly. And yes, we do have regular inspections. When we came, we've only been in Fayetteville a year, by the way. When we came to Fayetteville in June of last year, we recognized there were several issues with our shelter, particularly, they had no air conditioning. We, that was the first thing we addressed. We got, we got it fixed. Second thing is, the residents were buying toilet paper. I was mortified. If you're staying in our shelter, you don't need to be buying fans, you don't need to be buying toilet paper. So we, we got all that stuff sorted out. We did have an insurance claim pretty recently, I think it was in September. It was a $225,000 insurance claim. The building is in great shape. It's in great shape. Maybe, maybe, maybe we are talking about complaints from prior to when we arrived. It looks good. All the air conditions work, all the heaters work, and we've assumed responsibility to pay for all of it. And so we, we were having issues with our cook, where people were saying, you don't, you don't want to eat any of their food. And we fixed it. You know, we went in there and said, show me what you do, cook me a meal. And I said, I said, we're gonna serve hot food. They were, they were pre-packaging the food two hours in advance and giving it to people to go. I said, no, we have a fellowship hall. I want to meet all the people that come in to eat our food. And we have a warmer that's connected to a gas line. And we have a warmer that's connected to a gas line. We want hot food. And we did all that. Our building is in great shape. We've got walk-in cooler, freezer outside, walk-in cooler, freezer inside. Everything works. Now, it's not cheap. I had to pay a lot of money. But yeah. And so we get, so to answer your question, we get inspections by the fire marshal quite regularly. In fact, we've got a few things we need to do. I already have a list of things, particularly as it relates to emergency lighting. We can't get the batteries for the emergency lights, so we're just gonna replace the entire fixture. But that's, those are things that come up on those things. All the fire alarms, we have a fire, we have a contract for fire alarm, fire suppression and all that stuff, and the hood cleanings and all that. And so our building is in good shape. I'm not too pleased with the parking lot. Parking lots need some attention because we've got these 25,000-ton garbage trucks that ride on there and kind of tear it up. But we're working through those things. The property looks good. I would take anybody on a tour right now, I think you would be well pleased. And by the way, when we get complaints from our residents, we take them serious. If I have air conditioning in my house, they need to have it in their house. That's the way we operate. You know, if I'm, if I'm going, if they're gonna eat some food from the shelter, I want to be able to eat it too. And so I think we have a good cook that's doing well now, and I think you'd be well pleased with the condition of our building. And we have toilet paper.
Oh, we just lost.
Up? Where did I go? Hello?
We hear you.
We can hear you.
Can't see you.
It's breaking out on me. There we go.
You bring your camera back. There we go. We got you now, sir.
We've got toilet paper, we've got the air conditioning working, we are attentive to their needs, we have washing machines, and we have washing pods that we give to folks. We're treating them good, they're getting good meals, they're getting good social service work done there, and a lot of people are getting addresses. That's what we are supposed to be doing.
We've got one follow-up, Vice Chairman. Vice Chairman Jones?
And I appreciate you for the answers, and I thank you for explaining that. I guess my concern, I should have just put it out there. I was speaking of in reference to concerns of if the building had mold or any asbestos. So that way, if the health department, so I'm glad that you told me that there's no concerns of mold or any asbestos. So that way, when our health department, environmental does their inspection, we don't have to worry about any of those issues. I can take your word for that, correct?
So, but, yes. And by the way, we have had inspections for asbestos. We have signs posted that there is no asbestos in the building. And we also have reports from Sir Pro who did our remediation, that there is no mold in there. I would feel comfortable sleeping in that building.
Anything else, question?
That's all. Thank you so much.
Round, let me go to Commissioner Fairclough, and then Commissioner Tyson for round two. Commissioner Fairclough?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was very excited when I saw your proposal back to us because I thought that this might be a way to get you back open for a year until more permanent arrangements could be made. I'm disappointed to hear that at least one councilperson thought it was not the city's responsibility. And he may be correct about that. I don't know whose responsibility it is. I know it's not the county's responsibility. I do know under state law, there's no responsibility for the county to provide shelter. But it would seem that a workable solution here would be this partnership between the city and the county, which really could be helpful. And did you just stop with Councilman Hondros?
I've worked pretty closely with Albert from the city. I haven't, I did make a request to the city, the same request that I sent to Heather, that she saw that I was assigning $200,000 to the city and $300 and some thousand for the county. And when we met together, he kind of, I had to, he represents the Salvation Army Advisory Board, but I think he represents the city as well. And this was just, I mean, this wasn't a final, this is just, this is his opinion. I don't know if that's true. But I guess the long of the short is, we need somebody to commit to help us open. That's the bottom line. I don't know if it's, you know, this person, or that person, or this government agency, or this, I don't know. I don't know how, where we go from here.
Anything else, Commissioner Fairclough? Round two for Commissioner Tyson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One other thing, I'd like some clarification from you on, and I'd like for you to give us some commentary on. It was alluded to during the staff presentation that there was some issues surrounding your audit. And, you know, I'm smart enough to know, you don't hang around since 1887 and not be doing something right. I did have a chance to review the financial report that you'd sent over in the link format, and it was showing, you know, expenses and revenue of a little less than $2.5 million a year. So can you talk and provide some commentary back to the, I guess, the purported question of how good of a financial steward the Salvation Army is, and kind of if there was any issues surrounding this audit that was kind of claimed, what your answer would be to that?
So was the audit that you're referring to, the external audit or the internal audit?
The audit that ACM Skeens alluded to in her presentation earlier.
Okay. I'm not sure which audit. Anyhow, so as far as the way that our headquarters, and I'm not sure if you're referring to the external audit or internal audit, but our internal audit that had...
You're muted again, sir.
...happened in the audit, the Salvation Army is moving towards a liability-type audit where they look at risks. For example, the Salvation Army decides on what is acceptable for different programs and what we have to have, how much monies we can spend locally without a requisition. If we are doing something that's against the minutes, they give, they have to give us an assessment as to how this is, what the risk assessment is for the entire audit. And so I will tell you, if you looked at our 10-year financial, it really paints a big picture. I could see everything I needed to know about Salvation Army just from that one document, that, yes, we get a lot of funding from the community, we give a lot out to the community as well. But you see a trend there the last few years that's going down, the trend is just going down. The donors that give us money don't love the Salvation Army less, they have less to give to the Salvation Army. And I think we saw a trend right after Christmas, we were down about $360-some-thousand. And so that's kind of hard to overcome because that's our biggest fundraising season of the entire year. Although we do mail appeal and try to generate revenue throughout the year because we're providing services 365 days a year. So I think that, to answer your question, and I don't think it's also unique to Salvation Army nonprofits, it's tough. It's tough to keep everything going, and we need more people to help us. And so as far as sustainability is concerned, you know, we've been in Fayetteville since 1887. We'll be here a lot longer than a lot of the other agencies that are in town. After they've left, we're gonna be here providing services. Now, having said that, we appeal to the community, the county, everyone to help us in the mission. And so, but we can't do it alone.
Commissioner Tyson, anything further? Any other commissioners? Commissioner Adams, first round?
I do have, just first round. I just have one question. I hear what you're asking from the county, what is the, your parent company doing in terms of funding on this?
Our parent company is not responsible to give $1 to Fayetteville. Their primary concern, they're not a fundraising entity. They provide administrative services to the local core unit for things like legal help, for things like audit support, those things like that. Their job is not to fund us and to get us through because we don't have the money. That's not their role.
Follow-up, Commissioner Adams. Any other commissioners? And I'll add a couple comments with a couple questions. So again, Major Goldfarb, thank you so much for taking the time today to have a conversation with us. I'd like to kind of frame things back up, just so that we understand it. So the proposal you put forward to have a capacity of 50 beds as an emergency shelter around $46, 900 a month, which equates to about $13,000 for food and $33 for shelter. You'd request a 12-month contract, two months, or excuse me, two weeks to be able to execute an MOU and then get operational. So we're looking at the first or second week in June, potentially, depending on the rate that we would move. I think that captures it. You would also, you talked about the facilities, the conditions of the current facilities, and we talked about we would have environmental health as part of this. If we entered an MOU with you, we'd have environmental health inspect and be part of this process. Want to also make sure that you would be comfortable with performance metrics and some reporting back to us so we get some, and probably some of that may be done, but I think from a visibility standpoint, that this board's investing, rightfully so, half of, you know, $500,000 or half a million dollars, we're gonna want some reporting metrics back so we understand how many people are used in shelters, those kind of things, and it's all going through HMIS, et cetera.
Yes.
So I think those would be some other things that we would have. And then, before I ask a couple other questions, just county manager, has there been any conversations, even in a sidebar, I know we can't commit, with the city as far as their participation in an opportunity like this? Understanding that the county would be the lead agency in the contract?
The city reached out to the city manager, and based on our conversation or communication, the city would follow our lead. So whatever we decide to do, they would probably work with us to help jointly fund it. That's what I took from that conversation.
Commissioner Adams, go ahead.
I'm just trying to figure out where we are, because it sounds like pie in the sky to me in terms of, he's giving us, telling us everything we want to hear. But you tell me you couldn't find how good workers, but now I just found them like overnight. You can't tell me where you're pulling the money from, whether it's over here, over there. You know, before, I would commit to that. There has to be, I think, a lot more detail in terms of what the Salvation Army is looking to do. It just doesn't, I can't wrap my head around how all of a sudden you're just going to flip this and make it happen overnight in two weeks. It just doesn't seem feasible to me. That's just where I am on this.
And if we can, hold on, Major Goldfarb, I want to kind of conclude our conversations with the major, and then we can turn it back over to the board to have our discussion. So a final question from my standpoint, and Commissioner Adams, I hear we'll have...
Mine was ours, yours, me. Thanks, sir. I'm sorry.
That's fine. It's good conversation. So another question I would have, as we know in our community, we've got, based on a survey that was done over three years ago, that we've got an additional capacity of about 120 beds. Is there any, as part of your strategic plan, I know you said it was a rough strategic plan, is there any growth plans in that strategic plan?
One of the conversations that I wanted to have with Heather, in fact, I messaged her before Christmas so we could try to meet in all the coldness, was how does the Salvation Army fit in to the county's plan to have built or is building a shelter?
Yes.
I didn't get an answer. As far as I know, I don't know if, will the shelter ever be built? I guess the, my, what I wanted to happen with Heather before we closed was, let's have a strategy meeting. How could the Salvation Army kind of work in the county's plan? So if they're gonna open up that shelter, get somebody to run it, do whatever, you know, what does it look like for us? Do we continue, you know, what we're doing and have additional beds? Or do we do something different, like, let's say, rapid rehousing, where there is money from the federal government to do? They would assist county to, you know, they queue them up, and they have some families that are ready to go into rapid rehousing, they send them to us. But we never got that far because we closed the shelter. But the Salvation Army certainly wants to work with the county to do what we need to do to meet the needs for our most vulnerable people. We call them our friends, and so that's why I'm here today.
All right. Thank you, Major Goldfarb. And we're gonna go ahead and, I'm sorry, I keep calling you Goldberg, Goldfarb, I apologize, and people butcher my last name, so I should be more respectful. We're gonna go ahead, and unless you have anything else you want to add on the proposal, we're gonna go ahead and mute you so that you can listen into the conversation. If we had any additional questions from our board discussion, then we can unmute you and bring you back into the conversation. Is there anything else you'd like to add before we move there?
Just the pie in the sky. We don't want any of the board, any of the county commissioners to think that this is not a good idea to send Salvation Army some money. When we say we couldn't hire people before, that's just not the way I would look at it. We were using a temp agency because we had since 2017 or 2019, whatever it was, it was way too long, we could never afford that specifically. But that's what we had in place, and that's the employees that were trained to do the work that we were doing, so we kept doing that. Now, having said that, we are interviewing people and finding some people. We could have done that before, but we didn't because we had people in place who were doing their job, and we were just paying too much to get it done.
All right. Thank you, sir. We're gonna go ahead and mute you right now so the board can have a conversation. County manager, before I open it back up to the board for a board discussion, anything you'd like to add, or your assistant county managers? Or legal?
Not at this time.
Okay. Attorney Moore, Phil?
I can answer any questions you have about the legal, but I'll let you ask the questions.
Board, I'll go ahead and open it up for your discussion, kind of where Commissioner Adams started it. So Vice Chairman Jones?
This is more of a comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want everyone to keep in mind, unless temporary agencies have changed, the whole point of when you utilize a temporary agency is for those individuals that are working temporarily to become a permanent employee. If I'm not mistaken, that's how temporary agencies used to work. Organizations such as Salvation Army would hire someone through the temporary agency, but in the event, like, say, if we were to do fundings or decide to partner with them, individuals that he has on staff, if they were wanting to be a permanent employee, that's usually the goal of temporary agencies. You know, you work temporarily with the hopes that they'll place you in a placement with someone to offer you a permanent job. So I'm saying that to say, I guess what you are trying to say, I don't want to put words in your mouth, is that the individuals that are working for you, are they willing to stay on permanently? Because usually, when you get people from a temporary agency, they're working there temporarily, full-time, but for the agency. But however, when you offer them a job, then they just become your employee. Are the, is that not how it's working with the people that you have hired?
He's muted. I'm muted. I think his conversation, what he said is, they had temporary, they moved away from temporary, they have permanent employees now.
Right. And I guess that's what he's trying to say. When you utilize a temporary agency, they can become permanent if the agency that you get placed in says, we want to keep you permanent. I mean, at least that's how it used to work. I want everyone to understand that.
I'll open it up for kind of first round, Commissioner Patel, and then Commissioner Tyson.
So to Vice Chairman's point, I do want to share, and maybe Major Goldfarb can give us some factual numbers. can give us some factual numbers that are on point, but, um, from my understanding, the temp agency that was hired was charging the Salvation Army 18-plus dollars for each position while the actual employee was only earning $10 an hour. So I know that is going to be a financial hurdle for the organization itself. So even moving away from the temp agency, I think we would, we could see some more responsible spending, if you will, um, by hiring directly at $10 an hour, or, you know, potentially raising the rates for the employees. But I, I do think that, that could have been a piece that did hurt financially.
Anything else? Commissioner Tyson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think no, nobody in this room can argue that we have a significant need for our unhoused population to have shelter in this community. And when you have a provider that's been in this community as long as the Salvation Army has, um, you know, that, that, that's a provider that we need to support, in my opinion. And when you look at the fact that our county has not funded any part of this organization since 2023, to me, is a travesty. But looking at, from a math standpoint, when, when this board was presented in their agenda session, we're spending $400,000 to house people for 90 days at a cost of $100 an individual versus having this solution here, which would be 3125 a person. I mean, to me, this makes the financial economic sense for our taxpayers. It makes the sense for our community because it gets our capacity back. Everybody knows we're going to be coming into the, the summer heat, and that season is upon us, um, and that puts this population at risk. And I just don't think that this board can afford to sit on its hands and say, we're not going to do anything to address this, and we're going to let this partner who's worked in this community as long as it has, um, just go by the wayside and not support them. So that's, that's my two cents, and I, I thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield the rest of my time.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate your comments. Um, Commissioner Tyson, and I do want to say, because I, I feel like, just my little comments here, we definitely want to support, or at least I do, the Salvation Army, but I also want to say that moving forward, if we make this decision, that I want us, hopefully we will have a better, effective communication, not necessarily on our end, but on their end, because we do have resource money. I did not ask him that question because I'm just trying to move forward, but just as this, you know, the Community Impact Grant, $50,000. Now, we do need individuals, we're definitely, I feel like I'm going to be in support of helping them, but we can do our part, but they have to do their part. That being said, though, we're moving forward, when we do have, um, avenues such as the Community Impact Grant and things like that, I just want to make sure in the event, if we, you know, move forward to the MOU, that the Salvation Army, I'm a big supporter of them as is, I know the work they do, but I'm also accountable, just as we as leaders are accountable, their board of advisors and their leaders have to make sure, effective communication, things in place, as we ask of other nonprofits that we also try to help. Um, you have to, you know, put in your application. You have to make sure that you do your part to make sure that the process is made. So that is a key part that I'm going to, um, want to make sure is addressed. You know, you have to have communication, but just as everyone else has to put in for applications and do their part for us to help them, they as well have to be mindful, let's put, you know, get proposals in, or even if maybe we can help assist them in that area. So I just want us to do, them to do a better job of communicating with the things that are needed for the process.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Uh, any other comments? Commissioner Adams, round two?
Yes, thank you. I, I'm not, I'm not adverse to the Salvation Army. I'm not adverse to, uh, the unhoused. I think we even moved forward, talk, I don't know where we are on that. I guess we put it on hold, what we had voted on before, but.
On hold back in November.
Huh? No, no, the one that we voted on, um, when she presented at the, uh, at the, uh, that's the one I'm talking about. Yes, that, that's.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah, that's okay. Uh, I don't know where we are on that, but, uh, again, uh, they didn't get in this overnight, and I understand the shelter and all of that, but you gotta be a good, uh, steward of your finances. And I'm just looking at the, when you talk about this, and I'm just telling you, if you were a banker, they probably wouldn't invest in this, but, um, and it's, it's investment in our people, but in a year, six months, you know, where are we going to be? I'm sitting here listening. I can't tell you if I'm paying out of this for, um, the kitchen, I'm paying for this out of this. Uh, uh, there has to be some clear delineation of what the county's going to get for the dollars that they put in. Is it for the shelters, is it for everything, what we're talking about doing? Um, I'm looking at the numbers, and I understand, Commissioner Tyson, what you're saying, but, um, uh, you know, you didn't get in this overnight, and with it, the fiduciary, uh, responsibility on the finances just doesn't make, uh, sense, especially when you're not getting any from, I guess, from your home office, you're doing it all locally. Um, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other commissioners? County manager may be for, um, assistant county manager scheme. This is a low-barrier emergency shelter, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure we clarified that. Uh, any other comments? Um, Major, we'll, we'll, we'll get to you in a second, sir. I want to make sure we finish our, this is a, a time for our board to have a conversation, and, uh, then we'll, we'll allow you some additional comments.
Just need to know, um, as we move forward, I need to know what the comprehensive financial request is.
Any other commissioners, and then I'm going to open it back to, uh, the major to, uh, provide any additional comments before I look to the board for any action. Uh, if we can unmute him, uh, if we can unmute the major, please, sir. Please, all right. Go ahead. Go ahead, sir. Do you have, uh, anything else you'd like to add?
I just want to make sure that I'm clear, that the Salvation Army Shelter is not a low-barrier shelter. It hasn't been, it never has been. We've always, uh, we, no, it's not a low barrier. Having said that, the, the white flag shelter that we operated was a low barrier. The shelter, they have to go through the background check, uh, with the Sheriff's Department, et cetera. Uh, so I just wanted to make that distinction.
So, Major, to that point, the difference between what we would consider or classify, uh, low barrier versus high barrier, can you give us what the requirements are? Uh, because it sounds like it's in-between low and high, uh, based on federal guidelines?
So, uh, they, they can't have obviously any active warrants. Um, they, there is a process to let them in. They certainly can't be sexual offenders. Um, I could have, um, my staff speak, uh, to that, uh, a little bit more and, and provide clarity as to who, uh, we take in, but we don't just take anybody into our shelter that we don't know who, whose is. There's a process. There is, uh, I'm pretty sure that there's background checks of some sort, uh, with the Sheriff's Department. Um, so I'll, I'll have to provide some clarity on that.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Major?
No.
Okay. We'll go ahead and mute you back. And, uh, any other comments or discussion from the board? Commissioner Fairclough?
If, if we move forward with this, I'd like to ask the manager, where, uh, what would our, uh, funding sources be for our portion of this, if we have a portion?
I would, I would have to look at several, uh, funding sources to, to fund this, uh, what available, what we have available in our, we could fund it out of general fund, fund balance if need be. Um, but I will have to come back and, and, and let you know. Um, depends on, as I said, I need to know what the comprehensive, uh, request is for, from the Salvation Army for this fiscal year and potentially for any future fiscal years.
Commissioner, Commissioner Fairclough, anything else? Commissioner Tyson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as a follow-up to Commissioner Fairclough's question, uh, Mr. Manager, would it be fair to assume that in the presentation that we were given on the alternate option, that the 136,200 could be made available to, to fund towards this?
Yes, but I, I think, um, I think I just need to get the, uh, the information from the Salvation Army of the actual need that they have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Patel, and then I'll go to Commissioner Adams.
Yes, uh, thank you. And so one thing I do want to ask the board to take into consideration. One, I, I know all of us want to get a shelter and get these individuals taken care of. Um, to Commissioner Adams' point, I do recognize that this didn't happen overnight. Um, so I would ask our management team that when we do look at the financials, to make sure that the ask from the Salvation Army is adequate, and if there are any potential, um, accounts payables or anything like that, that, that's reflected in the, in the financial ask, so this doesn't become a burden in future.
Anything else, Commissioner Patel? Commissioner Adams, round three?
Well, I guess, uh, uh, that threw me for a loop when it's not a low-bearing, uh, shelter, uh, because that means there's going to be a lot of people on this, uh, that are not going to be sheltered because you got to go to get this background check. And I do understand all of that, and I guess that's one of the good things, is why they don't have, um, uh, somebody on site to do security, because they've kind of done it beforehand. But that still leaves a large portion of our unhoused not being able to get sheltered. Um, as you talk about the heat and all of that other stuff, so there's going to be another financial cost to this, and I think we have to be able to, to be able to see that, and it's going, it's going to happen. Uh, I don't know if that's our other partner or what, but, um, the other partner was a low-bearing?
Uh, yes, they agreed to be a low-bearing.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner? Commissioner, Vice Chairman Jones?
Thank you, uh, Cameron Devir. I do have one more question for you, since, as we all are stating, we understand that things do happen, and it took, you all have been operating for a long time. The individuals that were in charge of, I guess, you know, monitoring and keeping the finance, um, um, in order and structure, now, is, has there been a change, um, in that? Will, will there be somebody else handling in reference to monitoring the finances, or will this be the same person?
So, uh, as we, uh, with Commissioner Patel, uh, there will be a change in leadership at the Salvation Army in about 33 days.
Okay.
They are supportive of a shelter with the right, um, and the, and the right funding source. Um, having said that, you're absolutely correct. We dropped the ball on, on a lot of those community grants. Uh, we had a, we actually had a gap of employment of a development director at the same time that we arrived last year. Uh, and so, uh, our development director now has, um, kind of a calendar of when he can apply for, for those grants. We don't, we can't miss those. Those are important, and we were, we're hurting now because of it. Uh, and so, uh, as far as, uh, the responsibility of the board, uh, we have, we, we give financial reports at our board meetings, and every single, um, board meeting since Christmas, we said we, we've got to do something, and it didn't get done, and we, uh, we, we withdrew. Um, since we've been, been in Fayetteville, we withdrawn at least $350,000 of unrestricted reserves just to keep everything going. Um, and that's not how you really want to work it. Uh, you know, we, and so, to answer your question, we've got some work to do, uh, on our board as well. Uh, we're, we're not immune, uh, I mean, we've got some, some real work, uh, and real accountability with our board members as well. Um, and so, um, that's where we are.
Uh, thank you, and by no means was that a, you know, trying to chastise anyone. I appreciate your honesty and transparency, because at times, operational, sometimes you have to go through different leadership. So I just thank you for your honesty, and that's just to keep effective communication. So I appreciate that.
Anything else, Vice Chairman?
That's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
I guess my, my, my last question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I get, I have too many of them. Every time somebody talks, I guess I get some. If they're leaving in 33 days, I don't know that this plan that he talks about is one, I, I guess we talk to the new people that come in, because where he sets out, they may see something differently. I don't, uh, so, uh, it, it's, it's, uh, 33 days is a long time when you're unhoused and unsheltered, but, uh, on the way out the door, it's kind of hard to make an agreement with somebody on the way out the door, when somebody else is coming in the door who may see things a little bit different than the person going out the door. So, uh, that would just be my comment, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, kind of to piggyback on Commissioner Adams' point, and I guess this is a question back to Major Goldfarb, um, would it be correct to assume that whatever agreement we come up with would be with your entity and your organization, and it would be an agreement we would make with your board, not you individually? And also, can you talk about how your organization, um, does, um, at, at certain intervals have y'all stationed in different locations, and then that's kind of the normal course of your, your operation?
Okay. Let me start with the advisory board. Um, the advisory board really is the constant in the command. Uh, the, the core officers, uh, the officers change, uh, every, every few years. We just happen to only get one year, which is unusual. We had five years in Morehead City, and, uh, usually it's about three years. Um, having said that, the south, uh, the core officer locally doesn't make any, doesn't open any programs or close any programs. Uh, we make the recommendation based on our funding availability. They, we will say to them, you know, we see a need in the community, uh, here's our funding source. Um, the territorial headquarters in Atlanta, Georgia, is the one that opens and closes. So I would, I would erase any doubt you have about whether the new officers are going to want to operate a shelter. Uh, I think, uh, they, they support the programs that are presented to them. Uh, our headquarters are, are going to be the ones that go through this process, and, uh, we're going to be making, you know, the agreement with the Salvation Army Corporation, which will be carried out locally.
Thank you, Major Goldfarb. Uh, anything else, Commissioner Tyson?
No, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Other commissioners? I will, uh, is there, uh, any other, any other comments or discussion? County manager, anything to add? Mr. Attorney, anything to add?
Without, it, 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 just like, uh, Mr. Greer, without knowing what the comprehensive act is, is, amounts, uh, that you're asking is kind of difficult for me, but again, anything we do will be on a contract basis, we're going to provide services that they describe as we do with all.
And you heard the timelines for an MOU, which means your office would be, if, if the board moved forward with something like that, your board would be, your office would be in the middle of helping assist with that?
Those, those kind of far by, like, what we done before.
Yeah. Board, I'd look to you for any action. Vice Chairman Jones?
I make a motion that we direct our county manager to, basically to negotiate a MOU for emergency shelter services with the Salvation Army, and for it not to exceed over 463,000 annually. Also want to make sure that we ask that our county manager or staff member ensure the environmental health, do an inspection of the facilities, and also we want to make sure we have an ongoing check for, um, any asbestos and also for performances needed to be responsible for the part of the MOU. We want to make sure that our staff is looking into all of this. I want to make sure all of that's on the MOU, as well as we want to also assure and explore partnership of what the city of Fayetteville is willing to, uh, partner with us, and what will be their financial, um, their financial contribution or that of partnership with us, if they're willing to match the county.
Before, before we move to, uh, a second, can you just clarify that dollar amount?
563,000 a year, annually.
Okay. I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We have a motion on the floor that's been seconded. Uh, the motion, uh, as explained by the vice chairman, and I'll open it up for discussion or questions. Commissioner Fairclough?
Why 563 and not, uh, 363? Are we not going to seek input from the city? I thought I heard it was going to go after the city to ask for them as well. Did I not hear that?
Yes.
Thought it did.
Vice Chairman, you want to answer?
Well, in my opinion, I, I feel like, again, we can ask them. I'm not sure if they're going to help, um, help or not. I, I would like to think they would, but I feel like that would be a reasonable amount to be respected, as I said, not to exceed in the event, because again, I can't speak for the, um, the city, but I again, I can't speak for the, the city, but I can say, we are all leaders here at the table, and voters put us here to help, and we have to be mindful that the services they they provide, in my opinion, is the responsibility of the county and the city, but I can't speak for what Mayor Kovan and his team will or will not do. So when I look at that dollar amount, I feel like to, and looking at other, I do research, my screen went out, they've been around for a long time, and what it really costs, let's be realistic here, for up-and-running shelter, and I know that it's been thrown out there, we're not, we are looking into things at unhoused, but at the end of the day, this is the business that they do, and coming from nonprofit, even realistically, even if our unhoused center does get up and running, let's be realistic, it needs to be built, and that takes years. So with that being said, I'm going by a dollar amount that I feel, and my screen went out, for research it would take, you're talking about 24 hours, you need a social worker, you need staff, and all the services that he's already mentioned that they provide. I felt like that would be a good place for us to start. Again, I can't speak for the city, although I would like for us to look into what they can offer. I can't speak for what they will or will not do.
Commissioner Fairclough, anything else?
Yes, I would like to ask the assistant, I mean, sorry, Vice, Vice Chairman, if, if she would consider making her motion contingent on the city, providing the partner was asked for the $200,000.
I'll take that as a friendly amendment in consideration to, are you saying that you would like me to ask what now? I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
Okay. You, you said not to exceed 563.
Right.
And I'm just saying, would you, would you make the whole motion contingent upon the city's participation? Whereas if they don't participate, we would be back to the drawing board.
Um, to be honest.
I, I understand, all I'm saying is, I don't want to put the impression that we're taking on responsibility that should be shared by the city as well. And, and to the point that I tried to make earlier, big distinction between legal responsibility and maybe moral responsibility, or whatever, and when you're spending taxpayer dollars, I think you need to look at the legal responsibility before anything else. It's been put out in the press that the county had all this responsibility and all that. Well, they don't, from a legal standpoint, no. I checked it, they don't. But we're here to help people, so from a moral standpoint, and a, a human standpoint, yes, there is certainly an obligation, but not a legal obligation. And I just want to keep, I want to keep the city in the loop, because we have, I'm not trying to make a speech here, but we, we have been able to accomplish things under, under the homeless umbrella by having a partnership. And I don't want to give the impression that the county's willing to go along on this. That's all. And I'm saying, you know, if you would be willing to take that as.
I, I appreciate that, but I guess we have to agree to disagree. No, I, I just, I can't, I can't do that, because again, as I stated, I feel like that amount, and I'm realistically, respectfully, you're right, we are here for the business of people. We serve as commissioners here for the county. I can't speak for what the city can or cannot do, but I feel that that amount, not to exceed annually, I feel that these are taxpayers too, and we need to be mindful, I don't want to get passionate about this. Every individual that goes to that shelter has at one time or another, they're a taxpayer too. People get down on hard times, they're not asking for a handout, they're asking for a hand up. So I appreciate that, your input, but for my motion, no, I'm standing by the, I mean, I know we can take a vote, but I don't feel like that's an irrational amount to ask for, for us to be able to, to be able to, be able to support. And again, I can't, I can't speak for the city, but, and I can only speak as one votes for the county, but I want my motion to stand as is, and I feel, let me read my motion again, I know you're reviewing this, I'm sorry. My motion is to direct the county manager, I would like for him to please negotiate a MOU for emergency shelter services with the Salvation Army, not to exceed 563,000 annually. Also, if you can assure the environmental health inspection, will inspect the facility ongoing, please, and also to check for the asbestos and also performances needed. I feel like that is responsible. If all that's put in the MOU, I respectfully agree, we can all sometimes disagree. Also, please see, if you can look into a partnership with the city of Fayetteville, what they are willing to do for the homeless population. I don't know what they will or will not do, I just would like for us to do something. And I feel that for the county, I don't feel that that's asking too much. And again, if they, if the, if the city feels that they would like to help, fine, but if they don't, I can't speak for the city.
Commissioner Fairclough, anything further? Commissioner Tyson, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just wanted to reaffirm the Vice Chairwoman's comments. I thought the motion was very well crafted. Instead of doing a lump sum amount, she did a not-to-exceed amount, which I agree with. With the major telling us that the only way to proceed on this issue is with a commitment to fund it for 12 months, and with our only other option being to spend $100 per person per day on a, on a 90-day stopgap measure, to me, just would not be a wise use of our resources. So I just wanted to reiterate that the motion that, as presented, and wanted to applaud the Vice Chairman on a very well-crafted motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments or questions on the motion on the floor? Hearing none, the motion's been restated twice, I will not bother to restate it. I will ask for your vote.
Sorry.
Raise, no, you're fine. Raise your right hand in the affirmative of the motion.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Tyson, Vice Chairman Jones, Chairman DeViere, Commissioner Patel. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Fairclough and Commissioner Adams.
Is there any further business to come before this special meeting? County Manager, does that give you the direction that you need? You need additional information?
Yes, Chairman, no, no additional information needed.
Uh, one thing we want to look at is the agenda item that's on the agenda tonight.
We'll pull that one. We'll pull that in the agenda.
Hearing no other business to become before this special meeting of the Board of Commissioners, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. Vice Chairman?
Motion to adjourn special meeting?
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
unanimous.
And we're adjourned. Thank you.